Okay, it's 5:00 PM. We'll call it a order. The Village Board of the Village of Oregon from Monday, September 11th, 2023. First item is the, uh, item two is roll call.
Bealow?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Campen?
Here.
And just as a friendly reminder, make sure you're speaking into your mics, please.
Thank you, Candy. Item three, approval of village board meeting minutes if correct. No corrections, mistakes. We'll take these separately. So first we'll do July 26, 2023. Jason and Derek, comments, discussion, hearing on all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, second item is minutes for August 21st, 2023. Amanda.
I have a correction on that.
Okay.
Uh, item nine A, um, after our discussion about all the things being taken out, it says McDaniel and Manke voted no. That was actually myself and Manke who voted no. I went back and looked at the tape because I started to doubt myself because you're so good. And I thought, wait a minute, didn't I vote no? And I went back and watched, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion with the correction as noted. Derek, Amanda, further comments, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item four, public appearances, comments, communications. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone for public comments? Please, Tim.
Can I just ask that we take a moment to silence? Remember, September 11th.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Tim. Uh, item four B, wastewater treatment plan improvements and lift station upgrades. Item one, presentation from Town and Country Engineering on wastewater facilities upgrade projects. And we have Ben.
Hi there, everyone. Um, so I think most, well, everyone who's here has been involved with some of these conversations over the last couple of weeks. Um, for those of you on the Public Works Committee, it's not going to be as long as the last time we talked about this, but it is the same presentation. So if I'm starting to be long-winded, wink at me or something and make me go faster. Um, so the ultimate goal today, um, for I think everybody but Amanda, uh, is just a refresher on the facilities plan from three and a half years ago.
Oh, I, I'm, I was there.
I know. That's why I pointed you out as everyone except for Amanda. I think you're the only remaining individual. Um, and then talk a little bit about the preliminary design to this point and phase one improvements, um, which you guys will be talking about a little more as the next agenda item. Um, so I'm just going to quick rattle through. Feel free to stop me as we go along if there's any specific items that you guys want to focus on more. Um, but hopefully this will provide some information as to what's all been going on down at the treatment plant. Um, you can just skip over intro. Um, so big picture, uh, existing treatment facility that you guys have, um, dates all the way back to the, uh, 1937. Um, the big thing here for pointing out is the last time you guys did a major improvement was 1996. There's been some subsequent minor improvements, including the last one on that list, phase zero, uh, which was a part of the facilities plan, uh, recommendations, but the last major, major improvement was 1996. So why did we even start this, uh, back in, uh, 2018, actually, I think it was, um, we started the planning effort. So a facilities plan is a 20-year plan, uh, that DNR requires you to complete for any treatment facility. Um, that planning effort was begun because the last time it had been done was something like 95 or 96 in advance of that 96 project. Um, so that one was looked at, uh, from a variety of things. Uh, big picture, what you look at is what's the condition of the existing facility? What is your growth anticipated within the community? And then how are you going to accommodate, uh, the growth and the, uh, wastewater that you're already treating? Um, and what options do you have? And it lays out a variety of cost alternatives as well as, uh, operating costs to give you what the most cost-effective mechanism for running your facility for the next 20 years would be. Um, at this point for, for Oregon or at that point in 2018 for Oregon, you had a decent amount of, uh, older, uh, assets. Um, those were what was addressed in the phase zero project. And then beyond that, it was more associated with preemptive, uh, planning for growth, preemptive planning for, uh, more maintenance-based improvements, um, and then just making sure that you have the flexibilities in place to meet future code requirements, um, maintain your permit compliance and, um, have a well-operating facility. Um, big picture, what came out of that facilities planning effort was you had a large amount of clear water coming into your system. So the flow into your treatment plant was very high. Um, and actually the influent pumping station, for those of, um, was everyone here on the tour? Everyone here was on the tour. So the influent pumping station, we had kind of talked, well, except for Derek, I guess, but you've been through there a bunch. Um, but the influent pumping station was overcome in 2018, um, didn't have enough capacity to keep up. Uh, the pipeline between the pump station and the headworks, uh, had some pretty severe limitations and maintenance limitations. We kind of looked at that when we walked through. Uh, the blowers and electrical that is indicated there, that was at phase zero. So that stuff all dated back to 1984 and, uh, predominantly there, there were some pretty major electrical concerns. And then final clarifiers, uh, were identified as being a long-term capacity thing for growth in the community. Um, and then phosphorus removal, uh, efficiencies associated with phosphorus removal, flexibilities for the future. And then up until this point, you have not disinfected your wastewater and that was, uh, identified as a potential need in the future and a likely regulation in the future. So we all have been through the plan, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time going through, but that's an aerial view. Um, flow comes in on the southwest, works its way and, and eventually discharges back to Badfish Creek on the south center of the facility. And keep going, Lauren. Um, then as we worked our way through the facilities plan, and I think this is a, an important one for everyone to see, um, this graph was generated in 2018, um, and was what we use to project flows and loads for the treatment facility. The blue line at the bottom was DOA's population projection. Um, and that was normally what you would be required to use for any planning efforts. Um, we had petitioned both DNR and, uh, CARPSY to allow a more aggressive, uh, growth projection. So those upper two lines, the, the straight line and the curved line, uh, from a projection standpoint reflect the two lines that had been, uh, incorporated into the village's comprehensive plan, um, at its last update. And so we ended up using that, uh, one indicated as the 2040 population, the linear projection, um, which was 16,299 persons. Um, you can see from the 2020 census that you would have already been 50% of your weight to the DOA projection had you, uh, had we not petitioned DNR and CARPSY for that. So both entities did agree to it. So the plan is built around a higher population, uh, potential at the treatment facility. From that, then, we have projected future flows and loads. Um, I won't go into the details, but that's kind of how we broke all of that down. Most of it, the commercial, industrial and public based on the comp plan, uh, the population then also based on the comp plan, um, for 2040 as the planning year. Ultimately, this results in these revised numbers. All you really need to be worried about for today is the treatment plant is, is going to have a higher rated capacity, though a lot of the tanks and structures already had the space and the room to be able to accommodate that. The biggest change noted was the ability for flow capacity, and we'll talk about that as we get into the alternatives a little more in phase one versus phase three. Um, but there's not a whole lot of structural improvement necessary to accommodate the growth portion of what we're talking about here. So, big picture, um, and we can go into this in as much details as you guys would like, but we looked at an alternative one versus an alternative two. Alternative one was maintaining your existing facilities in Oregon, and alternative two was pumping it to Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District, which is located just on the south side of Madison off of Southtown Drive. Um, so alternative one, we looked at a variety of preliminary treatment, so the pump station and headworks, um, main flow of treatment and secondary separation approaches and kind of built this three-dimensional matrix of alternatives. And I think if you go on to the next slide, Lauren, actually, nevermind, just stay on the first one. Um, ultimately, what came out of there is there was a low-cost alternative proposed and an ideal alternative proposed, um, within those, which is a combination of the different parts and pieces from each one of those. Um, so if you've read the plan, that's, that's kind of what we're indicating there. The low cost, um, was the low cost just on a capital basis, but it left you with some significant deficiencies if you were to pursue that one for future specifically. As you start looking at future limits, you are limited there. Um, and then growth potential beyond this 20-year period. If you would have done the low-cost approach, it would have really been the last improvement you could make at the treatment facility because you'd just run out of room otherwise. With the ideal alternative, it was a little bit more capital cost, but, um, was, was a benefit to the previous board because it, it really did provide a holistic, long-term plan for your treatment plant as opposed to, uh, just the next 20 years. So, um, that was, out of those alternative one scenarios, which there were a variety presented, that was the intended approach for alternative one. You can go on to the next slide now. Um, alternative two was regionalization with MMSD. And there again, we looked at a variety of alternatives. Um, in that situation, you would have been pumping to Madison Met. So there would have been a pump station located either at the existing treatment facility, or, um, we did look at potentially locating a pump station across Highway 14 directly to the east. Um, the benefit with that arrangement would be it, it allows service to that southeast area of town crossing Highway 14, which if you ever do serve in the future with sewer, has a lift station proposed with it anyway, almost directly east of the treatment facility. So we looked at costs for both of those options as well as three different approaches to pumping to Madison Met. Um, and then, um, those being pumped to Fitchburg, pumped to one of Madison's pipes that are south of the community, and then pumped to, all the way to the Nine Springs Treatment Plant. Um, in conjunction with those, and if we talk about that more tonight, um, there were some significant connection fees associated with connecting to Madison. Um, you can see the numbers there. Madison was undergoing some transitions with their connection fees at the point we were doing facilities planning, which is why you see the range of numbers, um, increasing so dramatically in that. Um, those connection fees are based on land area. So, um, it's, it's basically whatever, uh, service area population, uh, Oregon currently has on a square footage basis, it would be applied based on that. Um, we can keep moving from there. Um, ultimately, um, we looked at that in a two, two ways. Um, one would be on an annual cost basis. So what that means is we looked at what would your principal and interest payment for a loan for, for any construction that the village would do? Um, what would be the principal and interest payment associated with that connection fee if you were to pump to Madison? And then what are your variety of operating, uh, costs to run your facilities? Because in both situations, you, you either have to continue running your own facility, or you have to continue running your collection system and pay MMSD's fees. Um, so those all get built into an annual cost and basically that's roughly equivalent to magnitude impact for, um, for your user rates. Um, and then that 20-year present worth is what the DNR requires you to look at. So it's taking 20 years' worth of capital and operating expenditures, bringing them back based on a discount rate to today's dollars. And that's the mechanism to evaluate which is the most cost-effective alternative. Um, what I show there, and if you read the report, um, there were two different evaluations presented. Uh, and the DNR does not allow you to incorporate sunk costs, so, um, DNR required that we evaluate it without those significant connection fees. What's up here right now is just for comparison, the real cost for Oregon. So it doesn't account for the fact that Madison's already spent some dollars because ultimately your community's going to pay, be paying for it. Um, so that was the analysis done in 2019, roughly, is when we were doing those cost analyses for this report. Um, the now reflects, uh, updated capital costs. So you guys have all seen, the numbers are quite significantly higher. Um, we kind of talked about this at Public Works, but we've seen, I'm going to call it, an unprecedented level of, of cost increase. Um, so everything you heard about and have lost sleep over relative to inflation and construction costs, we saw that times about 10 in the wastewater industry. So in the last, uh, four years, I was even going back and doing the math on our bid pricing, we've seen about a 200% increase in those, uh, wastewater costs, with the most dramatic one happening in the fall of 2020, doing the math, 2022 into 2023, where we saw about a 60% increase in construction cost in the bid market during that time, predominantly driven by, it's a very small niche market. Um, we've got four total contractors that are interested in bidding. There's an extreme surplus of, uh, projects out there. Um, we, we keep in communication with a bunch of the contractors, and there's about 200% of the dollars being bid right now just across the state of Wisconsin, um, compared to an average year, two years ago. Um, so those numbers that now area reflects the updated capital cost estimate based on phase one design, um, incorporating in those bid prices that we saw this spring and that rapid jump. Um, so ultimately, what we did there then is we, we updated the alternative one ideal cost estimate, um, but then just proportionally increased, uh, the MMSD assumptions, uh, based on what we've been seeing for the differences between treatment facility construction, which would be the pump station for pumping to MMSD, and pipeline construction, which is a different set of contractors and a different inflation that we've experienced. It's not quite as dramatic. But that then breaks down kind of what, what the comparisons for the facilities plan are compared to today. And ultimately, you can see there's still a pretty substantial, about a million-dollar per year difference between, uh, keeping your own facilities and pumping to Madison Met. So ultimately, what came out of that was a recommendation to go with alternative one, um, both from a standpoint of it was deemed the equivalent cost, from a cost effectiveness basis, it was a lower, uh, cost to the residents of Oregon, as well as had a variety of ancillary benefits, um, associated with it. Keep going. So then, what was proposed with that alternative one ideal was a three-phase approach. Uh, phase one is the biggest phase, and that's predominantly the liquid side treatment of the treatment facility. Phase two would be solids handling, and phase three, um, is the one that I hope we never do. Uh, it's a phase for additional capacity should you still have INI challenges roughly 10 years from now, or 15 years from the time the facilities plan was completed. Um, INI being that clear water, so leaky pipes. You guys have already, since the facilities plan, uh, prioritized fixing your collection system, and from what I've seen in your capital improvements plan, still have a lot of, uh, even more intent of addressing your collection system. So my, my big hope is phase three never happens, um, because that's, that is only there for the purposes of your collection system is still deteriorated beyond, uh, your ability to continue fixing it. And you just need to accommodate that additional flow. Right. So now, phase one. So phase one is liquid side. Why don't you just go on to the next, the three, I'm just going to walk through quickly the major components because most of you saw these. Um, new headworks building and lift station, so this is part of it being ideal, giving you space for the future. So a new pumping station would be constructed on the far west side of the site. This is going to coincide with the construction project you guys have planned on Oak Street to redirect sewers into the facility. This also provides the benefit with this new structure that should you sometime in the future decide to pump to MMSD, that structure can be converted into a pump station to MMSD. Keep going. Uh, existing structures, the selector and aeration basins, that's going to predominantly undergo mechanical improvements. Um, this is another big part of the ideal approach. So new final clarifiers, um, so those are the existing aluminum domes that you guys saw as we were walking around. Two new structures that are slightly larger will be constructed, but they're going to be constructed above grade. So part of the, part of that ideal approach is now raising those up. So we're going to pump the wastewater roughly 15 feet higher than the existing, um, which would then allow you to add things in the future. That's part of creating space in your facility to continue to have space for, you know, new limits, um, which have, happened to come about even as a part of this design effort is we've, you know, the village board elected in the last year to pursue disinfection, which hadn't been originally part of that hydraulic profile. So we would have had to pump for that anyway. So it would have increased the cost had we not already approached the ideal, uh, methods. And this also gives you space that if phosphorus limits become more stringent or the Yhara Winds project, um, falls apart sometime in the future, you have the ability to, uh, more easily construct, uh, filters in between or whatever other variety of new limits might come down. So that's a big part of, of the, the ideal approaches, those two new final clarifiers and the, the break in the hydraulic profile. We, uh, the village board did elect last year to install disinfection facilities. Um, so that's just a, a snap. There will be a new structure constructed right before it leaves the site. Um, and then the right-hand picture is what one of the technologies for disinfecting would be. We will be looking at UV disinfectant or disinfection, ultraviolet light. Um, and then that is one of the technologies. So there's, ultimately, what you would end up having is there's about 20 bulbs of, uh, that emit UV light, um, inside the waste stream. Waste water passes it and inactivates the bacteria as it passes that UV light. So we already mentioned, uh, we have prepared a 30% cost estimate. This reflects the, uh, market volatility we experienced this spring to be a 21, phase one being a $21.5 million project. And then I just brought this back in case we wanted to have discussion for it. Uh, but ultimately, I think that is the last slide, so we can also just go to questions if you guys have any.
Thank you, Ben. Questions for Ben? Derek?
Uh, less question, more just kind of a recap. So the two, uh, two comments that I've got from the public since the Public Works meeting, or questions were about the UV disinfection, wanting to make, ensure that that is in fact still part of phase one.
Absolutely.
And then the other one is a recap, the, uh, uh, difference per year on the 20-year plan was about a million dollars per year between switching to MMSD and, and, uh, keeping our ideal.
Correct.
Project.
Yep.
That's where the two questions, you already touched on it. I just wanted to recap just in case those people are watching. Thank you.
You bet.
Tom?
Yeah, I just want to get a clarification. So we have a recommended motion here of a million 300, which is, which is a long way short from the whole project. I'm assuming that this is just the first stage. It's, it's a commitment to the, to future investment.
That'll be the next, uh, agenda item, but that is, yeah, that, that would be our design fee. So right now, we're at about 30% of design, uh, which includes scoping and sizing of all the buildings. But then that, uh, upcoming agenda item is, uh, for us to take it through, through bidding. So we'll be finalizing design, going through all of the regulatory reviews, putting together plans and specs for bidding, and then putting that on the street as a, as a public bid, uh, roughly 15 months from now.
Anyone else? Okay, then move on to item, uh, four B two, task order number 21 with Town and Country Engineering Incorporated for Professional Engineering Services related to the wastewater treatment plant phase one improvements, Richard Road Lift Station Reconstruction and Rustard, Rustic Vineyards Lift Station, Electrical Rehab Projects at a Cost Not To Exceed, uh, $1,310,000. So we're looking for initially a motion to approve. Amanda and Derek, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, excuse me. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,113,289.57. This will be a roll call vote. We're looking for motion. Uh, Jason and Lynn, uh, questions, comments? Hearing none. Well, ask the clerk to call a roll?
Actually, can I?
Oh, sorry?
I, I just found what I was looking.
That's all right, that's all right.
Uh, there's a, towards the end, what, item 14209, the Yergi Vanliners Moving Services.
That is a deposit to reserve the movers for the new library move.
Okay. I kind of thought it might be that, but just verify. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? Okay, Candy, you want to call a roll?
Bealow?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Manke?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. We have one, two, three, four, five, six items here. We're looking for a motion to approve these. Derek and Tom.
And Tom?
Yes, Derek and Tom. Questions, comments? Derek?
I just have one on item C for the Staley Plumbing and Heating Contract. Um, off of that is the new village library. Did they, uh, and I'm guessing this is a question for Lauren, did they give any projection on what that cost might be once the warranty is out? What the future cost of, um, adding that system on?
Just to that, so I don't know what the cost to add is through Staley. We did get, uh, pricing based on another comparable community using the company that's doing our install. And so we have that in, in our budget as a placeholder because we will have to start paying that in our next budget year. Um, so I, I don't have that with me, but I do, we did get information on what that would be. Um, and then once the install is done, we will get quotes from various local companies to make sure that's taken care of properly.
As that, as that project wraps up, or the person, because I mean, as we're finding here with Village Hall, the HVAC is kind of an important thing. And, uh, is the person who's going to be, uh, kind of taking care of this system going to be part of the final walkthrough, just so?
Yeah, there's, there's two parts to that. I'm glad you asked that. We, um, are hiring a commissioning agent that will go through the HVAC system, um, all elements of it to make sure it's functioning, both as designed and also functioning as we intend for it to be used. So they, um, hold the HVAC contractor accountable to make sure everything is working properly, installed properly and things like that. So that's piece number one. Um, the company doing the inner install is Butter Spudding. And so they are the company that'll do the maintenance for the first year. So if there's any issues that we know that they were the only ones who touched the system and are, you know, the sole, sole company responsible for it during that first year. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, reports of committees, item for discussion and/or possible action. A Park Board, one, resolution number 23-33, renaming JC Park West to JC Community Park. This is, uh, recommended from the Park Board and the staff to motion approve as presented. Amanda, made a motion?
Motion.
Yep.
Okay, Amanda and Lynn, discussion. Amanda?
Just say, I, I really like this compromise. I think that was very smart to take the top two, and, um, I appreciate the process that it went through. It was well done.
Thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Let's see here. Public Safety Committee. Number one, twenty-two-three dash twenty-four, School Resource Officer Program Agreement with Oregon School District. This was indeed in our packet, and there seemed to be minimal revisions. Is there anything else to add, Chief, or?
No, I, as well, we've worked with the school district on this revamped program over the years. And I think they would agree, it continues to get better and better. We listened to feedback from, from community members, parents. Most of that taken on by the school district, but all of that certainly went into consideration when moving forward. There were two things that I felt came out of the recent work we've done with the school district, but then also the last meeting where we had Public Safety and the school district in attendance. Number one, my concern, I just wanted to highlight was, and if you've gotten a chance to take a look through the attachments to the MOU, there's a lot on this officer's plate as far as duties to take on. I, I did address those concerns with the school district, and as we looked at the MOU for twenty-three, twenty-four, I see they made some modifications, which I do appreciate. I just don't want to burn him out. You know, he's doing a great job, and they really like him as ZSRO. I've heard nothing but good feedback about him. The other, little bit of concern I had when, when we talked with this group was that they're very, very happy with Kyle Shuey as the School Resource Officer, but what happens if he suddenly leaves? This program isn't designed around one person. It's around how anybody can step into that. Yes, we'd have to build them through the training and through understanding how this MOU is significantly different than patrol, but that this is a program, not a person we're putting in this, in this position. What I will say to that, just to add to it in case any of you are approached by community members with these same concerns that what if Kyle leaves? Alex Caraco was a School Resource Officer before Kyle, and he did well as well. Again, it's that program, it's that MOU that's in place, the support from school administration and PD administration to see him succeed and be what everyone is looking for, that's important. So if you are approached, I would leave these words with you. Alex Caraco, when he was in the position, was a good leader within our department. That's why I felt comfortable putting him in that role. And it was very difficult for him to take on because it was significantly changed when he stepped in. He did very well, he always had a very calm demeanor and still does, and that's why he's now our, our K nine officer. But just, you know, I, I stress this with my staff, just because rank's not in front of your name does not mean you're not a leader within the department. And that's what I, I certainly think about Kyle Shuey. He is a leader within our department, he sets a very good example, and he is highly respected by his peers. So seeing him succeed in this program is only further teaching our officers what that looks like and how they can succeed in working with the school district and also our youth. So as we move forward, while yes, Kyle will continue to do great things, there's no doubt in my mind, just know that there are other officers on the wing watching this, watching him lead by example. So that's, not only is that Kyle doing excellent in his role right now, but excellent as a leader within our department, which I appreciate. And I'm happy to take any questions on an agreement or the list of tasks he has.
I was just gonna move to approve as presented.
Okay, so Jason, oh, sorry, Derek, then Jason, first and second. I just wanted to say too, I was at the meeting, and I'll ask it just for the benefit of people watching at home too. You'd mentioned potential burnout for the SRO, and what's your plan if he were to need an extended period to waive, you know, a couple of weeks or something? Who, who would you have step in, do you have a plan for something like that?
Yep, so it's a great question. We would work with the school district on what they feel comfortable with, what we feel comfortable with, but I think there's some good compromise there. Finding a person that's qualified will be there, and that we can spare, that would be ideal. We're still working through, I think, in future years to come, the possibility of how Brooklyn Elementary could be covered better. Obviously, that is not in our jurisdiction, but, you know, there's, we're certainly kicking around ideas right now.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. Other questions, comments? We have a motion on this?
You do.
We do, okay, so we have a motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you, Chief. Item eight, unfinished business, item for discussion and/or possible action. A appeal of three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-one cents owed by Alex Sektor under the terms of the five-year repayment agreement for lease offer employment expenses. There was some information in the packet. Well, let's get a motion on that. Derek and Amanda, the recommended motion is to deny. I do have, anyone, questions, I have one, but I'll defer. I didn't see anything other than in the packet, other than the, the former officer asked that he would appeal, but, but it doesn't appear that he put any kind of an appeal in writing or anything like that, or?
As I predicted, it was after, and beyond the deadline of when Martin needs that for the packet. So I knew it was coming.
Oh.
And just to stay ahead of it and try to streamline this and keep the process moving.
Sure.
I just went ahead and presented it to you. He has since given me an email saying he would like to ask that the Village Board waive this.
Okay.
That's really the only process we have in place, is that they simply email me and say, I want the Village Board to consider this.
Okay. All right, so we have a, a motion second to deny further discussion, any discussion, Amanda, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, traditionally, when we've had these come before us, and it does happen periodically, we have enforced the contract. I mean, that's why we have the officer sign it. So, I mean, unless there is a compelling reason otherwise, which doesn't sound like there is in this case, you know, we have a right to recoup our costs. So I, this is pretty clear cut for me.
I guess I would only ask in relationship, was there, what is the appeal based on? Just simply, he's appealing it and just no justification or no?
Correct, he gave me no justification. Occasionally, the staff member will. And if they do, I'm even careful how I present that to the Village Board. But in this case, there was no reasoning, he just simply wanted you to consider it.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion to deny. And a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, be review Village Board agenda policies. Now, I think everyone recalled, it just wasn't that long ago we talked about this, but Derek had asked, I think it was a good idea to consider each of these items individually. And so I think that's how we proceed unless you wanna do otherwise. So pardon me.
Would you like to see a motion first, Derek, or just go and jump into discussion?
They would like to discuss this.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll take these one at a time, as I suggested. So number one, Village Administrator Report. Derek, since it's here.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that's, I get the impression that we all kind of appreciated Martin's reports and packet that we would get each time. Just like to have a general discussion of, you know, not necessarily a workaround, but a way to get that information to the Village Board. And I don't know if we wanna go back to setting that within the packet or not, just based on what we've heard from the, the attorney on this. I'm inclined not to, but I, I feel it's important to have that information ready for the public because I think that people are interested in what's happening in the Village, and Martin's report has historically been a good place to find all that information. So I am open to thoughts and suggestions on how to make that happen. I very much appreciate the time and effort put into the research that's been done around the municipalities surrounding us, who has the generic agenda types and who doesn't. As far as how we work, work, not necessarily around, but within the confines of open meetings. Like I say, I'm open to ideas on this.
I guess, when I, I'm sorry.
Jason was first, then Tom?
So I'll just say, I, I voted against this last time just because it did fall into a gray area. Removing it and changing the way we do things, because it did fall into a gray area. It wasn't a black no, it wasn't a green yes, it was gray area. And the communication that came out of it helped us with the governance piece of it. However, this isn't life or death stuff, so I'm fine with what we decided last time as the board.
Tom?
I guess when I went out and I did a similar kind of search that Martin did as far as going through individual websites of the different villages, and it appears to be common practice to receive reports from the administrative staff of the particular municipality. It's sort of a, how do you, it's not, it's not so much the report, it's what you do with the report that's really the issue. And my, my thought would be is if we could direct staff to put a cautionary statement and similar to what we have as the public review statement at the beginning, where we would say, we can listen to public statements, but we can't take any action in relationship to it. And if we could have something to that effect, just not so much because we know, because we've gone through this as, as our discussion, this is how we're supposed to listen to these reports, but for the next group of that comes and the next set of trustees to know that they should just simply listen to the report. If there is something in there that triggers an, an action, then that should be referred to a future agenda. And just something more, more as a way as a caution kind of thing.
Derek?
I would almost go a little bit further as opposed to having a cautionary disclaimer on there to make it, there is no discussion by Village Board on this topic. It's for informational only if we're going to go that route.
Yeah, I, I guess I was, when I said cautionary, it was, yeah, it was more like, here's the speed limit sign with that.
Amanda, please.
Yeah, thanks. I, I agree, I really, really like the written report, and it's in the packet, so it is accessible by the pub, to the public. You know, it might be something where we could ask a question of, but we, but not a discussion of the item specifically. I, I think that's essential. I, I think we need to have the administrator's report in there. I depend on that to find, to, to know the status of any particular project at any given time. So I really enjoy that. I will just say as a caveat, you know, as we are discussing each of these, and it does apply to this Village Administrator Report as well as the next two points. I did a little bit of a deep dive into the, the legal materials that were presented. There were a couple of opinions by former Attorney General Peg Levenschlager. But the dates on those were March fifth and September third of two thousand and four. So I thought about what life was like in two thousand and four. YouTube wasn't even created until two thousand and five, and their very first live stream was in two thousand and eight. Okay? Two thousand and four is when I moved to Oregon. I remember very clearly, clearly being excited that we were moving from dial-up to broadband. The world was a vastly different place.
You're denying yourself, but go ahead.
So, yes. But my, my point in all this is, you know, a lot of the arguments made in those decisions are because, you know, even when board members are giving details or our administrators giving details about something, those details need to be available to the public. And arguably, our Village Board meetings and the details discussed or given forth in a meeting are more accessible now to the public, to more people than at any time in the history of humankind. So I have to say, I take those with a little bit of a grain of salt. Now, yes, technology can fail, I, I agree. I mean, like, things can happen, so we should err on the side of caution, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I almost am to the point where I would ask, is it possible for us to ask the state Attorney General now to see if the opinion would change based on technology for, in certain areas? That's kinda where I'm at, but, but my, basically, yes to Village Administrator Report and keep all that other stuff in mind as we talk about the next two.
Thank you, Amanda. Anyone else? Amanda, please, Lynn.
The only thing I was going to say, Amanda's got a really interesting point, and I'd love to hear more about that. So I don't wanna sidetrack it. I just wanted to thank you for the materials. I feel like we're making a much more informed decision and doing that legwork for us. I really appreciate. Sounds like lots of board members also did their own research, which I think is great, but I, I appreciate having this for the public as well, just so that we're using quality information to make these decisions.
Thank you. A question for Derek, I think. Well, first, first I would just talk a little bit about how we, typically how the Village Administrator's report is, it'll be in the packet. Sometimes we'll ask Martin to comment, but generally, he's not offering comments unless we ask, ask him questions, so. And that's the lead into my question, and that is, if we, if, if we were just to have this, his report in the packet as a somewhat, as someone suggested FYI, in other words, there won't be any discussion, it's just, it's there for us to read and, and members of the public, would you, would be comfortable with that?
Yeah, and so I apologize, guys, I am, I just have a little bit of a cold, so I just wanna let me know if you can't hear me. The open meetings law is focused on making sure that members of the public are reasonably apprised of what the subject matter of the meeting's gonna be. It's not concerned about the flow of information necessarily. So if Martin wants to provide the board with information, he's free to do that. Outside a meeting, inside a meeting, in the, in the meeting packet, that's absolutely fine. If that's what he wants to do, if that's what you guys want him to do. The question though is that if there's, if there are materials in that, that the board is gonna discuss, that a member of the public wants to be aware of, how are we gonna provide notice to them that if it's something that they're interested in, they can be here to, to take notice of it, right? And on a scale, there are things that are very important and that reasonably should be noticed as, as best as possible, and then things that are very, fairly inconsequential, like our conversation last week, at the last meeting about kudos. Relatively inconsequential in terms of, do, do the members of the public need to know that we're gonna compliment Leon on her great work with the park? Probably not. But it's nice to put those in a bucket separately so that the, the members of the public know when, where that's gonna occur during the meeting, right? But if Martin wants to provide information, or if the board wants Martin to provide information in a report, say, here's what I've been doing in the last two weeks, there's no issue with that, as long as, especially if, if, if there's reference in the notice to his report itself, and there's a, a public knows where they can go to get that information, I don't see any issue with that. But again, it's, it's a reasonable standard, right? Is the public reasonably apprised of what's going to happen at the meeting?
Right, right. Well, as I understand the procedures, if, if something is included in there, for instance, occasionally we have fire EMS meeting minutes, and it states right there for information only. And from my experience, we've, we've always just passed over that, there's been no comments or anything. And I see that to be potentially similar in that if we don't start even asking any, if we just FYI, you know, no discussion, I think, what it sounds like is you're, you're comfortable with that.
Again, it's not, it's not particularly problematic for me. I think, I think that some opinions have talked about maybe that shouldn't be included in there. If there's not gonna be any action by it, then why, why are we including it at all?
Right.
Right, because it can just be distributed to members if, if you want them to be made aware of it, right?
Well.
But if it's not a subject of the meeting itself, then it's not that problematic.
So you're saying that he could distribute this, his report via email to board members?
Absolutely.
Lynn, Amanda?
I still think that there's a benefit to the public seeing it in order to show what is going on, like many have mentioned. I think that the idea that if we're asking a question that is clearly visible on the report, there's an assumption that that's a reasonable discussion to be had. But if something's new, then we need to add that to future agenda items. Correct?
I wouldn't be comfortable with that, but.
Okay.
I think to Derek's point and just from, from my experience, if it was presented in front of you and it's presented as an FYI and then you ask a question, that's a discussion.
Okay.
That, Amanda, then Jason.
Well, yeah, I, I'm kind of with Lynn on this, I, I see a lot of value to that being available to the public so that the public knows the status of all the current projects. I have gotten good feedback from people that it's nice to be able to see all of the, you know, in a nice chart form, like here's the project, here's what the status is, you know. That is really valuable to me, I do read that every packet. And if there's any other things that he wants to communicate in a memo, that's fine. The only discussion I ever remember having on that is to say, oh, like, you know, the, the date in your, in the meetings changed or something like that, but it, it's, it was more of a, it wasn't, I don't know, what I wouldn't consider a discussion. But something struck me too, that you said Derek, when you were talking about how we have to be as specific as possible so people can be in the room. And that, again, with technology today, you don't really have to be in the room, so like, it is still accessible to the public. I mean, the less discussion there is, the better, I'm on board with that, you know, if we want to be concise or have a reminder in there, whatever it takes. But that, that chart and upcoming meetings, all that stuff is, is really concise and a nice thing, I, I really think we should keep it in the packet.
And, and just to reiterate, again, these things occur across a spectrum, right? The, the former agenda item, village board comments, is exceptionally ambiguous. We have no idea what that includes, a member of the public looking at would have no idea what the village board is going to discuss at that time. Versus moving a little bit more towards the middle, village administrator report, CPAC for the report itself. You, you at least know where to go to see where the subject material that may or may not be discussed is located, right? Or specifically, if, if there is a, a specific agenda item for an item like this wastewater treatment plant presentation, the member of the public knows exactly what it is. So it moves from general to very specific, we just want to operate as much in the black as we can.
Sure.
Jason.
All right, I was just going to say that I, I appreciate the thought behind this, I like where this is going in terms of the village administrator report. I concur that, that discussion shouldn't happen fortunately for us as board members and the public, we get it ahead of time. So if I have a question, I can send Martin an email and Martin's pretty darn quick with those things. And, and I like the, the caution that Tom and Derek mentioned as well, and keeping it in, in the packet for public's information, I think is, is very important.
Derek.
I guess I'd be willing to move to add the village administrator report back to the packet with the added verbiage afterward. Items are for informational purposes only, no discussion or questions from board, board members on topics within the report.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for checking that box. I wonder if we could maybe just clean that up a little bit and just say, you know, I never, FYI only, no, you know, no discussion or action, something like that. I'm trying to think in terms of, and it's been alluded to earlier, I think by Martin and Derek, and that is a future village board, if we have something in the agenda, maybe that'll carry beyond whoever sits here or there next. Tom, all right to you, what I proposed, yeah, okay, so we have a motion in a second for the discussion. Hearing on all those, favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item. A B two, report of officers, I think we're in the same spot, who wants to jump in on this one? Derek.
I guess with this one, I'd be in the, I would want to proceed probably similarly to what we did with the village administrator report. And there's, especially with public works, been times where you've gotten some really good information through that and not to leave anyone else out, but I just kind of noticed Jeff tends to utilize that a little bit more heavily. I'd be willing to kind of go the same, like I say, the same route that we just went with the village administrator report on.
If I could just clarify, Derek, are you speaking about Jeff making a verbal report or are you asking Jeff to start preparing a written report?
Let me, I'll clarify on that too, it needs to be written from any of the department heads I find, so it's part of the packet. And again, just informational, not for discussion and no questions.
Okay.
So, and that would be through all the departments, not just Jeff, I was just using him as an example.
Okay. So that sounded like a motion, anybody want to, Derek, Jason, we have a second for the discussion. Sounds, go ahead, Amanda, thank you.
Thanks, sorry. So my, my biggest concern too is that if, if there isn't time to get something in writing, and I'll use as an example, when Rachel had the issue with the, the senior center, right, when, when the, the food thing fell through, that it happened before, you know, and after the packet was created. And it was an announcement, kind of a plea for help to see if someone could help out and people responded. And, you know, was that foreseeable? Absolutely not. And I know the law does say in the wording, like, you know, whenever, as, as much as possible, whenever possible. And to me, I want to make sure that, that we have a space for that when there are urgent things like, you know, and you can always write it up and put it in another packet to discuss at a future meeting too, but I don't know, I, I just, I don't know how else we would learn about those things and be able to get them out to the public in, in such a quick manner, and that was really beneficial. So if anybody's got ideas and, or Derek, if you want to weigh in, like, how to handle that.
Go ahead, Derek.
Again, I just want to separate the, the flow of information versus what is actually occurring at meetings, what, what's the agenda for the meeting, right, the subject matter of meetings? And, and there's nothing to prevent Rachel from emailing everybody on the village board to, to make a note of what the issue is, if there's an emergency that needs to be brought up. And we can potentially talk about maybe like kudos and announcements if there's something that's a, something's telegraphed to you, Amanda, and that you say, you think this is important to raise to the village board, there might be an opportunity there, and then you can, you could, the board can make that decision. But the idea there being that the agenda notice, the notice for the meeting has to go out at a certain time. And that notice has to include certain required information to apprise the members of the public about what's going to occur. And if we don't have that information, we can't put it on the agenda. But again, that doesn't prevent, that doesn't prevent anybody from, from forwarding information onto the board itself.
I was just going to mention too that if there was an emergency, we can amend the agenda, I think 24 hours at a, and I think what, two hours in an emergency. So if something like that came up, it could be put on the agenda and we could discuss it then, in that short period of time. But maybe I'm getting too far off the weeds here.
For good cause, yeah.
Yeah.
For good cause, yeah, okay.
Lynn.
So I have a question about making village officer reports similar to what we just did for the village administrator. Let's take today as an example, Lauren's going to tell us about this tank. I'm not allowed, I wouldn't be allowed under the new rules to ask a clarifying question about the tank?
I think you would, because it's on the agenda in this case.
Okay. So I guess I am, sorry, I'm slightly confused about the difference between the village administrator's report, we've, we've deemed that to be no questions, it's informational only.
Right.
Village officers would be open to subject matter questions based on their report. Okay.
As long as it's on the agenda, yeah, okay. And we have, you know, I'm answering some of these questions, we have an attorney here, but.
So, just one comment too, so at least in the past, we've had a standing village administrator report item. Generic item encompasses activities and status of things that are involved with the village administrator. The other, I guess, practice that we've had with reports of village officers has been there isn't a standing, any other standing officer report item other than the village administrator, because the village administrator reports directly to the board, it's the only staff member that does. But when other staff members have a specific report that they want to provide to the board, and in this case tonight, for example, like you said, Lauren has a report on a specific item, I have two reports and they're on specific items. In those cases, they're specifically on the agenda, so you could discuss those items. The issue with the village administrator report is it's just generic. We don't know, there's not a specific topic, that's where it becomes problematic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason and Derek.
Yeah, so for, for what I see what we're doing here is we're allowing a place for village officers to similarly, if they feel like, if they would like to, provide a generic report like the village administrator, but it wouldn't, it would no longer be a verbal report to help it be publicly available, much like Martin's report would be, and if they have ideas about specific items, it would fall under an agenda item, am I understanding that correctly, is that, is that what everybody thinks we're doing? Is that what we're doing?
Well, to me, it, it creates a question of, are we going to ask, if they want to make a report to put it in writing, and then the second part of that, I think what you're saying, the second part of that is, are we going to treat that the same as the village administrator's report? So. I'm not really sure where to go with that, but Derek, you were, I think you were up next, I mean, I'm still thinking about saying that.
I think as far as the reports from the officers go, on the very specific items that we have tonight, I, I would think that that's specific enough to be, stay within the open meeting laws. And again, I don't want to pick on departments, but like Chief Pagan cop, you're, sometimes you have your report in there, which covers just a broad range of what the police department has been doing throughout the course of a couple of months, sometimes. I would think that that one, and correct me if I'm wrong here, becomes a little bit more problematic because it's too broad based.
As long as there's a reference in the, in the, in the agenda to this written report, I, I don't, I don't necessarily see that as problematic. Again, the public knows where they can go to see more information about what's going to occur at the meeting.
Tom, and then Amanda.
I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I got the clarification of the clarifications. So we're talking about reports of officers with a presentation, so that they would actually speak to their report if they chose to, or they could simply put it in the packet. But in no case, no agenda items are associated, unless there's a specific agenda item.
Right.
Then we cannot, it's just for discussion purposes or for information purposes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, and, and I don't think, you know, I guess what I was hesitating about before is we're not creating a standard where people have, where, where the department heads have to start providing written reports to every meeting, just, you know, in case anyone's panicking. But if they, if they wanted information to get something that was FYI.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I think back, a good example of that, when, when they did the tree planting at, at Garrardish Park and another place, Jeff might write, you know, write a sentence or two about that. And so we're, we're informed, but we're, we've, we're deciding not to discuss. So.
So, so my understanding out of all of that is basically this would, with, with a statement that we're not going to discuss it, that basically we would go back to the kind of reporting we've been doing and enjoying for the prior periods?
No.
Are we requiring a report or the report is only if it's chosen to be provided?
It's, it, we can only discuss it if it's listed at that particular, and using my example, if, if it's a report on the addenda says a report on tree planting at Garrardish Park, then we can discuss it, but, but if it's, if it's just reported, but officers included in the packet and he puts something in there, then, you know, unless it's specifically listed as an agenda item, I don't think we can discuss.
I think the, I think the point though is that say, if we get to the section on reports of officers and Jeff has not provided any report for you, but it wouldn't, it would be inappropriate for him to say, oh, and another thing, let's talk about this other issue that I, that just came on my mind. If that's not on the agenda, it's not a subject of the meeting, it probably should not be discussed, right? But if he's provided a report, then that could be something that he can provide information to you, there can be some clarifying questions perhaps, and then that's, that's the portion. So then, again, the public knows that that portion, that, that subject is going to be discussed at the meeting. But if it's just, just a blanket for, for a person to speak or to, to, to provide information, it's probably not acceptable. Does that help?
I would just comment that I, I'm not comfortable managing clarifying questions.
And, and Phil, if I can direct you to the public appearances section under 4A, we've got, we've got the commentary right on the agenda as well. Second sentence says, under the open meetings law, this agenda item allows the board to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information.
Procedural.
Yeah.
Right, but and to, and to, excuse me, and to ask questions to facilitate a better understanding of the information.
So what you're saying is that a department head could, could without the item being listed on the agenda, just under report of officers, they could talk about the tree planting that.
What I mean though is, for example, village administrator report, Martin's provided a report and includes five different things.
Right.
The board could potentially ask Martin questions, you talked about this event, can you provide more information on this to help me understand, what, why are we doing this, what's going on?
Yeah.
Why does this person need a permit, what, what, where are you at in the process? Those are just questions to facilitate the board's understanding. That's, that's communication between the board and, and the officer providing that information. What we're not going to do is have a discussion amongst the board about what we want to do with that information.
Okay.
Right, the same thing that you, that would happen during public comment period, right, you can ask questions of Tim if he's got, if he's got, if he's got information that he wants to share, but the board's not going to start discussing that information or take any action on anything.
Okay, Amanda, you were next.
Thanks, yeah, so just, I want to clarify what would happen if something happened like with, with Rachel, again, you know, like a, a similar situation where it comes up. And I don't know how far in advance of the meeting you had that information, but.
An hour.
One hour, okay, so we're saying basically that she would not be able to talk about any of that at the meeting in real time, basically?
Well, I think this is sort of bleeding into the kind of the, the next item, which is the announcements and kind of miscellaneous business. I think for reports, it, it sounds like generally what I'm hearing is the board wants it to operate similar to how it was operating. A generic village administrator report, well, we can add cautionary language to that. And then allow other staff members, consultants to submit reports on specific topics, and which we put on the agenda. Beyond that, I think what we're talking about here is just an announcement or some sort of miscellaneous business or some sort of other business, which I think is going to be captured under the next part and the appreciation piece of it too. So I think with reports, I think we want to be a little bit more formal, I think they, those are written, I think those are provided in the packet. And then this other stuff, these other comments, I think we want to try to capture potentially in this next item, would be my suggestion.
So it sounds like, think Martin, it sounds like essentially, are we going to treat it the same as administrator report, is that what we're coming down to? So.
If somebody submits it, so, like, like if Chief Pagan cop has a, a police report, she would submit it, it's written, and we can, we could discuss.
If it's on.
Have questions or whatever, that kind of thing.
Yeah, but under, under what's currently the report of officers would be different. Yeah, but under, under, what's currently, the report of officers would be different because it is, it's a standalone agenda item, it's not a specific item like these other items.
So my understanding is you could submit a report to go under that item?
Yeah.
So it's, it's reports of officers, and it might be none.
Yeah.
But then there also might be a sub-item if somebody submits something, and then we can spell out what it is, and that would allow us to ask clarifying questions and then do that, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's, alright.
I mean, just philosophically, this is handling, addressing, there was reports, almost like public comments, except you have a report in advance.
Okay. So, that's not like a motion, Amanda, is that right?
We, we actually have a motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, I don't know that our motion or second is, is...
It is seconded, yeah.
Yeah, but does it cover what we decided?
It says to add a written report to the agenda for village officers, and note they're for informational purposes only, and no discussion, is what I got.
Okay, and so it sounds like we're varying a little bit from that.
I do like the language that we have in, in 4A, a little better than what we crafted.
Okay, so then, if we want a different motion, I move to table our current motion indefinitely, so that way we can get to a better motion.
Yeah, okay. Well, we could ask the motion, second to withdraw.
Or you could amend the motion, too.
Okay. Agreed with your second.
So nobody, nobody's voted on this motion, so if you have an amendment to the motion, you could make that.
Yeah, or the first and second could withdraw, and we could start over. Alright. Okay, go ahead and amend it then.
Okay, let's, let me give it a shot.
I'm gonna go to the bathroom.
Okay.
So, let me give it a shot here. I'd like to amend the motion to say that we would allow a written, submitted written reports of officers with the, with a note that says items are for information only, and, like, basic similar language to what, what we had before. Is that...
That's what we got.
Is that what?
If you, if you want me to change that somehow, say so.
I think if we just amend it to the 4A language, to say, allows the board to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate more informa, a better understanding of the information.
Okay. And is that a second there, McDaniel?
Sure.
It sounds like it. Further discussion. We got it?
Yep.
Hearing that, and all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-motion carries, thank you all.
So now you gotta vote on the, on, yeah.
On the, that was the amendment? Okay, so, alright, yeah, so, alright, so back to the main motion. I didn't realize we were doing that, but...
So, just to clarify, is this vote on the main motion, if we vote that down, then the amended motion goes through?
No.
No.
No?
No.
Oh, the motion has amended, okay, got it.
Yeah, so now we want to, we have, we have a motion and a second on the main motion, so all we need to do is vote on that. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-motion carries, thank you. Item maybe three, announcements and appreciation. Who wants to tackle this? Amanda?
I'm for it. I mean, this, this item, I feel like, I mean, while it's arguable that, you know, is, is it board business? Sort of. I mean, I like that, I see Lisa's got her hand up. Go ahead.
I just have an example, maybe this will help.
Sure.
For the announcements. So, and I don't know if I can speak on this, because I'm not sure what's going on, but we did send out a new format for our utility bill last Friday, and we received a lot of calls today regarding the new utility bill that people are receiving. Can I just, like, make an announcement, just asking, or letting residents know that nothing has changed with the bill? It's just a new format for the bill. There's, you know, everything that you see on that was on your postcard, but now it's much easier to read. Can I do that at announcements?
I think you just did.
That was brilliant.
Okay, so, go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, I, I, I see that as relevant, timely, there's no way you could have gotten something in the packet on time, because it went out, or people received it today, right? So you're just getting those calls. It's sort of, I, I, I see them as public service announcements. And, and I see, this is the, the biggest thing when we, when looking at the case law, right? And, and, or the decision by, you know, from 2004, right? You know, if you're not in the room, you couldn't hear that in 2004. And now we have a giant megaphone on the internet, and so a lot of people are gonna hear what you just said, because people do watch our meetings. And it's not the only place, though, where they could get that information. So, to me, though, like, when, because of our nature, the nature of government, we want to get people information. So, if that's the case, we don't just post it on our website, we don't just talk about it at board meetings, we don't just send it out in a snail mail thing to people. We do it all of those places, because different people get information in different ways. So, to me, that is part of our job as a government, like, that, that's a perfect example of an announcement that we would want to say in a board meeting. To me.
Derek?
I would just say that that would be a perfect way of an announcement, although it wasn't necessarily an announcement, it was just an example.
Good, good point. It was a question.
As far as this item goes, I think it ultimately needs to get treated similarly to the administrator report, or the reports of officers, where it's informational only, items not for discussion or action. I would almost break out the announcements, because that seems a more urgency-based entity, and then do appreciation from village board members under a different agenda item, even, just because that's, an announcement is one thing, getting the information to the public, a kudos is, in my, at least in my opinion, just kind of a different bucket. So, I would probably keep those two kind of separate.
Tom?
I guess, I'm, I'm going back to that, this, this sounds just like a public comment, and it should be treated as a public, we have a, we would, as a citizen, would have a right to come and make a public comment, without action, without reactions to it. We should be able to do that kind of thing, with the understanding that, you know, that, you know, I put together an announcement about the terrific time that we had down there, and somebody doesn't, we don't want to turn that into a motion and an action and so forth. It's just simply, hey, way to go, guys, and, and that's, that's the end of it. I mean, that's, that's, we should be, have that right as a public citizen on almost anything.
Right. And if I may, Tom, I think that's, that's a really good example, but the only counterpoint I would make is that, as the body of government, you are held to a higher standard in making sure that the public is apprised of what is actually gonna be discussed at that meeting. A member of the public obviously can't provide any notice of what they're gonna speak about ahead of time necessarily, but being that the board controls the agenda, and the staff works for the board, right? There is a mechanism by which you can provide notice of that that's happening. So, it is a little bit invalid, it's not quite the same as a public comment period, but I think that the mechanism we're using is, is fairly similar. My question, though, is how are you gonna differentiate between what you want to include in a village officer report, and what's gonna be an announcement? What are the difference between those types of things? And I think those can be kind of tough judgment calls, especially if you want to treat them differently.
And I would just say, too, to, to that point, I worked in a community that were member, elected officials became subject to an open meetings violation, and regards to the standard, they asked the city administrator, "Did you know that this item was gonna come up? Because you put the agenda together, did you know?" It's like, "No, I had no idea." They brought it up. And so that was really kind of the nail, right there, was the person who works for the board and puts the agenda together, didn't even know that it was gonna be brought up.
Jason and Lynn.
So my question is, if we're gonna have a PSA section, do we need a separate sub, parenth, parenthetical, "This is what that means, this is what that entails"?
Just from my perspective, there's not a, a legal requirement that you separate them? I guess the question is, is there some procedural requirement in terms of, of information that they need to provide ahead of time, for example? Is there some reason why you'd want to treat them differently? Otherwise, I'm not, I'm not sure whether they need to be, to be separated or not. Oh my goodness, I apologize. Oh, just to, to Lisa's point, and then to Amanda's point, it just, it just has one other counterpoint to say the utility bill example, which I think is a really good example, that, you know, me as member of public, that might be something that I wanted to know ahead of time that the village board might be discussing, might be raising, and if I didn't know that, I wouldn't know to tune into the village board, I wouldn't know to check YouTube or to check the community access channel, to know to see, oh, is the board gonna talk about these new utility bills that day? I've got no notice of what, of whether that's gonna be up, up on that, that day. So, again, comments, announcements, reports can be great PSAs, they can be great public service tools, but if, if the notice doesn't provide it, information to the public about what's gonna be discussed, they have, they don't know what's gonna be on there. And I think that's, that's, that's what the open meetings law is trying to get at.
Okay, Lynn and then Amanda and then Derek.
So, two things. First question for you, Derek, just based on this example. Lisa gives this announcement, nobody says anything here, we all nod, and we move on. Are we in violation of the open meetings law?
Again, that's kind of what's gonna fall into the gray area. It's, it's a reasonable, a reasonfulness test. Again, no one's going to, no one's gonna necessarily bring a charge against any of the board members for that, as a violation of the open meetings law. I don't, I highly, highly doubt that's gonna happen.
But it could.
But it could. It potentially could, somebody could raise that issue. Again, you're in a better place, you move higher up that spectrum, when you actually have written notice of exactly what's gonna be on there. So if Lisa were to prepare a report that say, "Hey, just want to, want the board to know we received all these issues," I understand that that's a timeliness concern, in terms of like getting things in the packet, getting things on the agenda. And so there might be opportunity to fit that into announcements or elsewhere, just, again, one-way communication to the board. But to the best of our ability, we just want to make sure that things are gonna be discussed by the board at the meeting are on the agenda. That's what we're trying to get at.
Okay, and then my second part, sorry, quickly, is if Lisa wanted to, in some ways, get that announcement out and apprise the board of it, and not to be in a, trying to skirt the law, if she did it in new agenda items, to say that she's proposing, "We review the new utility bill due to questions received today"?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think new agenda items is only a place for board members to request it.
Got it.
New board. And again, there's, there's nothing preventing Lisa from sending emails to village board members. Again, communication outside of the open, of the meeting itself, and then the board saying, "Hey, Lisa made this, noted that this was an issue, we need to make sure that we talk about this at a next meeting," for example. And so for things, for things that are not, don't quite rise to the level of emergency, that might be one way to tackle that problem.
Okay, Amanda and then Derek.
Okay, so, that assumes that village board meeting members check their email right before a meeting, you know, which, but, but even so, if, if Lisa were to make an announcement like that, upon hearing it, we can absorb that information, and then when we get to new agenda items, we could say, "We'd like to put this on a future agenda for further discussion," and like, that, that could be a way, as long as this, the new agenda items happens after the comments, that would be a way for us to receive something for a future agenda item.
Right. Because again, you're not discussing it during future.
Right. Exactly.
You're just taking a line in the sand, saying, "I want to talk about this next time."
Exactly. But in the same way, the information gets out there for the public, too. And if I may, one other point, you would ask the difference between a report of officers and an announcement. To me, reports of officers is something that it's, we receive that's written, that we can put into the, the packet, and people have access to, as opposed to an announcement which does not have anything to go with it in the packet.
Right. And, understood, and I just want, I just want to be clear, because I know that there are, as you can see, kind of in, in the information that Martin put together, a lot of communities do this many different ways. And so, for example, they may only do reports of officers under one given item, and then for announcements separately, it's only announcements from the village board, that, that the prior item was the only time that, say, village staff was allowed to speak. And so there, again, there's just a question about, who's offering that information when, and how do we provide notice of that? That's what, ultimately, that's what we're trying to do. And I think Martin's information is good, too, because it shows that, again, many communities do it differently, and I think our goal is just to endeavor to do it the best way we can. If this is frustrating, then you should just know that there's just very little law in this area. I mean, we've got, we've got, the statute is ridiculously simple, it, it says exactly what I told you before, and there have been some attorney general opinions describing that, or commenting on that, but there's, there's very little for us to go off of, in part because I think prosecutions are rare. But again, if we're just trying to provide the best notice possible, how do we make sure that our, our notices for the meetings include the information that we're gonna talk about? That's all.
Thank you, Derek. Derek, I think you're next.
This is probably the trickiest of the three, I find, because this is the one where we're really trying to dance around this. I, really, I'd be more inclined to, as far as the announcements go, do the same thing that we did with the rest of them, not for discussion, not for action, really no questions on it, just, it's in there, and say things at your own risk.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, nobody else is waiting, I'm thinking, no. I, I see a place for this, because I think Amanda makes some good cases, you know, there's, someone wants to announce an event that people may not be aware of, or there's something more urgent, or Rachel might have something, or one of us became aware of something, because we've spoken to one of the department heads. So I think, I'd be comfortable with having that, and also, kudos, as long as, as Derek just outlined, we're saying, you know, we're not gonna discuss it, we really don't comment it, we're just, you make these announcements and go down the line, and then we go to the next item on the agenda. I can live with that, I think I can manage that, which is something I try to keep in mind for myself and wherever else, might sit here in the future. So, I'd be comfortable with that, if, I'm not really sure, Derek's comfortable with it, but I think he can live with it.
This Derek, not that Derek. I was just gonna make a comment, I, I think if we, if we keep announcements or miscellaneous business item, I think to Amanda's point, I think we should move the future agenda items to that heading, so that when we get to the end of the meeting, there's any announcements, whatever comes up, and then we also have that future agenda item, so everybody can hear everything that happened previous in the agenda, and that's the last thing we do before adjournment.
So, I'm not, I'm not clear, did you say you wanted to add the future agenda items to the announcements?
Yeah, to move that from new business to announcements, miscellaneous business.
So, I'm, I'm still unclear. What, what that agenda item read?
Right now, so right now, future agenda items is under new business.
Right.
We have item 11 on the agenda, which is announcements and miscellaneous business.
Mm-hmm.
If we keep that, add a cautionary statement, potentially, but then we also have a subheading where we move future agenda items.
To that, to that spot.
Because that's right at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
And everybody's heard everything before that, including reports of village officers, any announcements that came up. If there's anything that came out of those two items, then we'll know that, and we can say that during future agenda items, if a board member wants to bring something up.
That makes sense. Amanda, go ahead.
But why not add the, the whole new business section to the, the end of, move all of, like, in this agenda, for example, number nine A and B, why not put all the new items at the very end of the meeting before we adjourn?
This way, we don't have to amend the ordinance.
Something to be said for that. Something to be said for that.
And, and I would just say, practically speaking, I think the items you're gonna put under new business are often gonna be things that you wanna just address first or earlier in the meeting, anyway. You might have consultants to hear, you might have people here presenting, and you, you might wanna just tackle those and get them done with before you get to the very end of the meeting. That's all.
We have the ability to, to move things around in the agenda right before the meeting, too.
Of course, yep.
Well, I think we're looking for a standardized method here, so I think we're in agreement on how we're, what we're actually going to do. So really, you know, the motion needs to be, well, you want something in there in this motion that says we're gonna move this to a different part of the agenda? Or is that not necessary?
Yes, I would say if, if you wanna maintain the announcements and miscellaneous business, I think the motion here would be, you know, to direct staff to add a cautionary statement and then move the future agenda items to, as a subheading, under announcements and miscellaneous business.
Jason?
I, I'd make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Lynn, for second, further discussion. Hearing and all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Derek and Martin, for your.
So I'll just say, so the three motions that passed tonight on these items, I'm gonna go back and have that reflect in the policy now and then the policy will come back for final approval at the next meeting.
Okay. Great. Okay, I'm gonna get this started. Amanda, if you wanna take nine?
Sure.
Yeah, nine.
Okay, item nine is new business. Items are for discussion and/or possible action. Nine A is 2024 budget background information.
So, in the past, I've provided a, I guess, budget primer at this meeting every year. And so it just talks about general information about the budget process, where we're at in process, and then talks about just the background of what the budget is, why we do it, why it looks the way it looks, how it comes together, explanations of all of our different funds, and some good practices for, for village board members to keep in mind. Certainly happy to talk as much as you want, as much as you want me to about it or answer any questions. Otherwise, the report's in your packet and you can read it whenever you want.
I love this. Just gonna say it. Any questions or comments? Okay, I don't hear any, so we'll move on. Let's see. Nine B, future agenda items. Derek?
Yeah, so the Fire EMS district, the committee that is set to kinda be the building committee for the new fire station coming up, is holding their first meeting on September 21st. I'd like to put on the agenda for October 5th, just a discussion regarding next steps for the fire station and the building. And Martin, I'll provide you more materials after the building committee has met for that.
Anybody else?
I have one. I would like to put a, a potential discussion of our utility bill and explanation or something that will allow us to discuss that further at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Then we are, without hearing any others, I'll say, we'll go on to number 10. Reports of village officers, which I'm not sure we should be doing after that discussion, but.
Nope, it's, it's fine.
We can, okay. All right, so 10A, Assistant Director of Public Works, Village Engineer Report, update on the Janesville Street reconstruction project. And there is a report in the packet for this. So Laura, drop it.
Most of the, I would say most important information is included in the report. I'll just touch on a couple of general questions. One that we get all the time is how long is this going to be going on? How much time do we have left in this project? And while I can't speak for sure for the county, the last update that we got was about six to eight weeks left. They have finished their primary grading work on phase two as of today. And so they're gonna move forward with concrete. And then they're looking at October for paving and then final restoration. So I know that their hope is to have this done by the end of October. Coincidentally, that is also our target for the state and Washington Street projects as well. So everything should be coming to a close, this whole great adventure we've been on as a community, by the end of October, in time, hopefully, for Halloween. But we'll keep residents updated of that as well as you guys. The main issue specifically that this report was created to fill folks in on is the tank that was found kind of right out in front of the Little Buddy's popcorn shop. It was found in the right of way, so it was predominantly not on public property. I wanna be clear about that. The right of way is a little nebulous as to whether it currently is village or county right of way. After the jurisdictional transfer, it will all be village right of way, so it's rather a moot point. But when it was found, the county immediately took lead on this, got in touch with SES engineers who specialize in exactly this kind of work, had their operations supervisor on site immediately. I was out there as well. And really, to my mind, coordinated this as well as could be done. It was determined to be, as best we can tell, a waste oil tank that was left over from the service station that closed sometime in the 1970s, per resident reports. This is not the worst thing that has ever been found. It's not a common occurrence per the county, but it certainly has happened before, especially in some of these industrial sites. So the primary contaminated material was removed. It was sealed into 55-gallon drums. It has since been removed from the public works site where it was stored and disposed of. We're continuing to work through testing and trying to figure out what, what other remediation efforts the DNR is gonna require us to take. There's a similar site, actually, on Janesville Street, very close to this, that has a concrete cap in place, so that's probably the most straightforward option, the most common option. That may be what we're looking at here. But the county is continuing to take lead on this. We will have some additional costs incurred as part of this, of course. Typically, those are split in similar cases, so we are amending the jurisdictional transfer agreement. The goal is still to get this transfer done by the end of kind of the main project and then finish up this work as needed this year or next. If we do end up delaying kind of final coverage, we're looking at at least putting in place a layer of impermeable material, something like asphalt, just to make sure that we're not leaving a permeable area for more of this to kind of get washed through with rainwater and toward Badfish Creek. So, as I said, this is being handled pretty much as, as well as I could hope for. And, and the DNR has been in the loop on, on all of this. But we just wanted to make sure that if you did get questions, it's something that you guys were aware of as well.
Thank you, Amanda, for stepping in. Questions for Lauren and all?
I'll get in my kudos, though. Nice job handling this. Since it's a discussion item.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. 10B, Village Administrator Report, in particular FYI, annual refunding of existing bond analysis.
Yes, the report is in the packet. So every year, Ellers does this review for our existing debt obligations to see if we can take advantage of any lower interest rates and generate savings. And so this year, as with the last couple of years, they've determined that none exist right now. And I would suspect since over the last 10 years, interest rates have been pretty low. Now they seem to be pretty high. That for the next couple of years, probably at least, this will be less likely of something that will happen because we already have quite low interest rates on our obligations right now.
Questions for? Okay. Item 10C, Village Administrator Report. Joint Forces for Families Program, office spaces and hours at Village Hall. There was a report in the packet. Anything to add, Martin?
No, just an FYI. This is something that came up a few weeks ago and I thought was a good opportunity for the Village Hall to take advantage of and, and good for residents as well. They've started to be here in the Village Hall last week. And they'll continue to be here every Wednesday and Friday. So it's just another opportunity for residents to take advantage of the services that they offer.
Okay. Questions? Questions? Thank you. Item 11, Announcements and Miscellaneous Business. A, upcoming, upcoming meetings and events, there is a report in the packet. And item 11B, Joint Meeting of the Planning Commission and Village Board Plan for Thursday, October 5th at 6:30 PM related to the Comprehensive Plan and Five-Year Parks Plan Projects. Amanda?
Just a point of clarification. You had asked to put something on the agenda for October 5th and.
I misspoke there, spoke there for the future agenda item. It should be October 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna bring that up after. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, item 12, adjournment. Jason and Amanda, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. And I was the default parliamentarian. So that's why I'm giving, trying to give legal advice when there's one. So I'll try to refrain from that in the future.